She called me.
I remember, well, the time to go that Thursday to meet with her. She's in Chamberlain shopping and the door got her and hooked, you know, the stuff for her. Took the feet off her and then she laid on the high knee broke that shattered kneecap. Told her to buy her kneecaps after this deal on people's hands. Good to go.
Wes.
She wants a break of paper, hotel room for a weekend to get away from us all. It'd be a lot better than that. Said it's pretty peaceful last night.
I just.
At home, yeah.
That's good. I like.
Yeah, she likes it. Trust me, we've been training from last two and a half weeks pretty well.
Yeah. But you can.
Okay, not bad.
Oh.
How much should I owe her?
Okay.
Great. Just take three on the house numbers.
Good.
So we can do something.
Good.
That's just as far as we've gone.
Postpone, so I can.
Yeah, yeah. He's, he's.
But the knee looks good.
Yeah, I was hoping to catch him before we start, but. All right, ready?
Yep.
All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting of the Buffalo County Commissioners to order. If we could do our pledge of allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, and so now we're going to do the nominations for chairperson. I'm gonna grab Steve real quick.
Yeah. Where'd he go? He goes in here.
Yeah. I didn't even have my braces.
And here, cut his ponytail off.
I said you look different. Like, does he look different?
Cut his ponytail off. No hat.
I don't know, it's neat. I got, let me give the little kids over that deal.
Hmm?
It was for kids, wigs for kids.
Oh.
Actually, we've got two, I think, kids, they need wigs for them.
Oh.
Take another three years to do it again.
A lot of people do that. We already called the meeting to order, Steve, and we're at the nominations for chairperson. We decided to wait for you.
Okay.
So. And then, I'm not sure, did Chris Jacobson called earlier or came here earlier today to talk about this conduct? Did you guys get anything in regards to that? We're supposed to say something, but we can do that in February. Okay.
We got it.
So I guess there's a new sort of codified law that says that everybody's supposed to know of it. And is aware of all of it. So that's what she said today. But we can do that in February. I'm just gonna ask everybody to look at it.
Okay. Spread it out. It's just, it's just.
We've had this out here for a long time.
It's due annually.
It's over me tomorrow. It's just standard. It's like five each month.
Okay.
But so now we have a nomination. We have not had a nomination. So if they wanna, you guys wanna discuss that? You. For Dawn?
Dawn, yes.
Okay.
I abstain.
P abstains, then how can we go to a second?
What? I'm sure.
If Rex says he does want to abstain, can I do a second on that or how does? Okay. No, 'cause she isn't elected yet. So as, as the auditor, I can second?
Yeah.
Okay, I second Dawn's nomination. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Is that a, opposed? Did you say opposed?
Post what?
So the next then, Dawn, you take over the, you take over the chair.
I'm sorry, I can't read.
Nope.
Okay, make sure you.
I did, I know.
Uh, nominations for chairperson.
Vice chair.
Vice.
Or vice chair.
Vice chair. Come on, get there.
New year. Yeah. I can't do anything.
You'll have to nominate yourself.
I would nominate Danita as the vice chair. Okay, so then she can second it?
She can second it.
Okay.
I can second it.
You can second it.
You can second it, yeah.
I'll second it. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
No.
Rex? Go, no.
So we'd have to do the oaths.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have one. For them. You said there was a third one. There's a, you said two or three?
Those three, right there.
This is your own office, okay? So you're gonna, you're gonna say your name at the right place. You're gonna say, my office is right place, which is Commissioner, okay? So you actually can read this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have, let's do it individually, okay? It's easier. We'll start here.
I unders, I, the undersigned, do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of South Dakota, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge all duties of my office as
Commissioner.
Commissioner in Buffalo County.
And so tribe just wanted to on this day, and you sign it. And, uh, for data.
What is?
Today's the. Fifth or sixth?
Sixth.
Six. Okay, you're next.
I, the undersigned, in solemnness, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of South Dakota, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties of my office as Commissioner in Buffalo County.
Right. Rex?
I, the undersigned, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of South Dakota, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties of my office as Commissioner of South Dakota. Which I, the writer, should I put on one?
I don't know why. It doesn't matter. Just so we understand. All right, thank you. I can notify them, send them back. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, I need a motion to accept the agenda.
I would like to not change the agenda, but I would like to have Wes be right, right after public, right before public input so that he can go.
Okay.
That's just to change stuff. Is that okay? All right.
I'll move.
Check.
All right, I got a motion by Danita and a second by Rex to approve, accept the agenda. All in favor?
All right.
Close, same sign. I need a motion to approve the December twenty-third fiscal meeting minutes.
There was no change, it's just like the census in the mail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor?
All right.
Okay. All right, Wes.
Start off with fuel bids. Um, just wanted to, total oil, non-blooded bill price, two fifty, ethanol, two thirty-one. Diet, number one is two ninety-eight, number two for two fifty-two.
Can I get a motion to accept the fuel bids?
I'll make a motion to accept.
All in favor? Thank you.
As far as highway requirement, with it being an open winter, we are still blading. As the frost allows, one morning, we did put on old blades to save the new carbon ones we brought earlier. I don't wanna, it wears them down a lot quicker. The way you guys have been cutting trees in the mornings when it's froze, catch snow, we can get some snow. Otherwise, um, you'll see, I, there's a sheet on there, it says traffic data for Buffalo County. Where you see that, I grabbed two secondary roads, media you mentioned earlier this year about looking at our primaries and secondaries. If you look at that top one, that's Lead Road, north of the chick in there. Gives you a daily average over a seven-day period. And then that one below it is actually your road going north up there to that lodge.
I recognize that.
And I mean, if you look at the traffic, that road needs gravel much here, really for this year.
Something more than once a month?
Well, it don't gravel itself. It's lacking. I'd like to gravel it at five miles at least, going up from your place north. Um, I mean, it averages thirty-six vehicles a day. Any other, the lead road, it averages nine. So we, we were blaming it today, and it's lacking. I mean, can your road quite a bit? It needs gravel. So, but we're doing two primaries right now. One's the Shelby's where a comparison, obviously it's highly traveled. And, uh, the other one's Duncan up north here. So we'll have a comparison to the primary to show the numbers versus that's what I'm like.
So you're gonna have to show us numbers for Shelbyville?
Coming.
Are you showing us numbers?
The next, we not have that. The, the counters are up right now. So. And this is a pretty deal with LTAC. We work with them. It doesn't cost them anything. You know, Lead Road has always been a problem. And if we just keep maybe what we can until we figure out a way to fix it in soft spots. But I don't foresee sticking a whole bunch of time in one morning what we have been. But I, I definitely think this spring, we should figure at least ten loads a mile, up that five miles. That's my recommendation. As a minimum. That's still pretty light. Other than that, I don't have much. It's just pretty routine stuff. A lot of maintenance is, we're better than pretty buttoned up in the shop. All machines are in top condition, so if you have something for me, any recommendations or any complaints?
Haven't heard anyone.
The big grant didn't get turned in. I got confirmation back from the state on that. So maybe have a ten percent shot this year.
And that's on Larson?
Yep. I still think we're looking twenty-twenty-nine. I think we'll be pretty stoned, but then they're giving money to rebuild that bridge, probably three years out. And maybe we'll get lucky.
Maybe.
But that, that's all I got. I can stick around for, you know, about half hour, then I gotta get back to hospital, so.
Well, I think you've answered our questions and probably should head back to the hospital where you're needed.
And I'll jump on the phone one drive in case you need me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Please, flatly, I know we're thinking of her, and if you need anything, you continue to touch base.
Appreciate it.
Public input, Sherri, can I point?
Oh, I have a question about the audit. I read the audit online on the state side. And one of the things that I noted in there, it says numerous reporting errors within reports prepared by the county. And that this is the second audit with this finding. And the result was the management chose not to respond to this finding. You paid, I believe, twenty-three thousand for this audit. And you guys received this audit last month as a board, and you didn't even have one question.
Are you finished?
I think so. Are you?
Well, I spoke to Brandy yesterday at great length. And this audit was much better than it had been two years ago. In which it wasn't even an audit that concerned Deb. It was for the two years prior, before we had Deb here. And I asked her how big a problem that we had. And she said the problems that we have are very addressable. The other thing she told me is Deb is relatively new. She said it takes years to become a proficient auditor that will have zero problems. And she felt everything that was done was fixable. So as if you're telling me the management did not do anything, you were wrong. Because I took the time to speak to Brandy myself.
But at the meeting, there was nothing said when the auditor was.
That's fine. I, I didn't have to at the meeting. I, I took my own time when I could speak to her without twenty people sitting there. And as her and I talked, if we all had vultures over the top of us questioning everything we did, how good a job would you do? And with you sitting there and pointing out all these so-called mistakes, I see none of you wanting to take that office and do it. You all can sit there and say, this needs to be done, that needs to be done. Well, maybe one of you should put your name on the ballot and see how easy of a job it is. As Brandy said, this is not an easy job. And Deb is still relatively new, and that's why auditors work with each other. And as far as a voucher being mis-signed, I could have mis-signed it. It could have stuck together. And I didn't catch it. I am human. I have human error. And I'm sure if we all looked in the mirror and looked at ourselves, there ain't a one of you there that can say you're perfect. Thank you.
I'd like to add something to that. You know, for twenty-five years, I've seen the audits. And those first years, Sherri, you can remind me too. Remember when we seen those audits, there were pages, pages of deficiencies. And over the years, we've seen that. And I do know that she's right, it's a reason, but there've been some changes also. And being able to follow through on some of that, I mean, we're still haggling over the post up there, you know, we haven't been able to in any of them. I mean, that's just an ongoing thing, you know? So I, I think you did a very good job.
Yes.
Comparing to what we had before, yes.
You said the previous are twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, whatever it was. Deborah was here for twenty-twenty-two.
She was here one year of that on.
But twenty-twenty-one.
And if I go.
Excuse me.
Well, you went on the public input, but go ahead.
Twenty-twenty-one, you have was here a month and a half. So I swayed up to ten months. And then Deborah and Mrs. Larson were there. There were no problems with that. Problem started in twenty-twenty-two. And for once, just would like to say something, hear any of you up here, accept some responsibility for your errors and say, gee, yeah, we made a mistake. We'll try harder. We'll do better. But you know, it's always our fault.
I'm not saying it's her, our fault. Deb is trying.
We weren't watching and asking questions. She could do much better. I think that's a poor excuse.
Thank you. I, I would, I would challenge all of you to go back and check every audit that's ever been done.
I've read a whole bunch of county, other counties.
Yeah, I, I'm not talking every other counties. I'm talking Buffalo County. If you'd go back throughout the years, there's never been a perfect one.
I'm not saying perfect, but twenty-one missed statements.
And as I have said, when I talked to Brandy. But I, I know that you all have been talking to Brandy and Ron and Tom. I also know that.
And I ain't supposed to talk to Rod. I had a long talk with Rod, just like you had with Brad.
Um, I.
And I. Didn't know he was talking to you 'cause you don't listen, 'cause I talked about getting the deals out of the minus all summer. Nothing was done.
I had.
Till we hired Sylvia, paid her money to try to figure it out. And still nothing was done until we had to do it at the end of the year.
We've always done it at the end of the year, and it's.
That ain't the way it's supposed to be. Call Rod Portman and ask him.
I will visit with Rod, but I'm not one to just pick up the phone.
He said he can do it, but that, 'cause there is a number there. So you know if the highway department's spending more money. I never heard the need to ask if there was money in the budget for that stuff, for other things you did. But when you're in a minus, you know there ain't money in the budget.
But.
Correct? You don't know.
I, I don't think, I don't think like.
Same meeting line was that.
Why not? And I don't think like.
So, anyway.
Thank you, I'm hung. There were two hospitalizations. I gave them to you. One, there was like three or four that were in there. We've looked at those before, but they're just trying to get two thousand twenty-fives.
Right.
Cleared up. And then the other one was a, a December one. And I don't believe it would be for one that we would have to authorize or go through.
Isn't there one that we are still getting billed for that we don't?
We got about, we got about fifty, uh, twenty thousand dollars that.
Yeah.
We have to start kinda looking through and.
Those are the ones that deal with, um, in general, I won't say this is true of all, but those are the ones in general were uh, investigations that they did for abuse that were not requested and not pursued, usually not by, not by us, but from the reservation. The VIA would make arrests or investigate something, or someone would show up to hospital, and then the hospital would do a relatively expensive screening that wasn't requested. We're arguing with them about whether we should have to pay for those. Okay? That's, and there are a number. And since we, uh, brought the issue to their attention, there's been a significantly smaller number of those happening. You know, they felt that they had to do it every time anybody walked at the door, and we're kinda like, I don't think that's, I think they were trying to protect themselves at our expense. Anyway.
Well, and once people go to Chamberlain and, and don't give a proper ID or anything else, everything comes to the county no matter what. And then you figure it out after that, so.
So that's, uh, most of those.
Yep.
And, and basically, it's come to this, I think. They said, well, you need to pay these. We said, we're not going to. They said, we'll sue you. They said, go ahead. They have. That basically what it came down to.
And I have numerous times asked them to just come to a commissioners' meeting and we could, they haven't done that either, so.
Anyway, that's, that is all.
Okay.
So then the next is the treasure auditor report. Janice and I met and we were, everything was good, so.
Are we doing them together as was in the audit that?
Her and I talk every month.
Okay. And it's being signed like it's supposed to now?
Right, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep. It must be Wes. So then the next is the register of deeds. I have not done the year end yet because I do not have year end with Janice. And I have not done year end yet. But for December, we had five hundred and seventy-five land transfers filings and M and P items, so. And then on the other, which I'd like to do is I would, I sent all three of you the, I'd like another contingency. And I think I sent it to all of you.
Yeah.
So there was still, after doing all of the December billing, a contingency. You guys still have thirty-eight thousand five hundred in contingency. Of that contingency, there were two that were still in the negative. So two, one oh one, two one three, four, two two, which is your.
Corner.
Corner. I would like to transfer five hundred for that to make that a.
E increased our, our bid by five hundred dollars.
Yep. And then the other one is for the highway department. After, um, everything went through, we still had, we have a negative about ten thousand something. So I'm asking eleven thousand from one oh one, three one one, four two two.
That's the professional service?
Correct.
Yes. So she's asking for eleven thousand five hundred total.
That'll just get us caught up, or does that allow for anything for going through next month?
Well, we can't do next month. This is for two thousand twenty-five.
Supposed to be, if he has anything to spend money on in January, there should be money in the account, cup. Just like them, when they bid the bridges two hundred and some thousand, the day we said, go ahead and do it, we should have put money in that account.
Everything I know do with Rod is to go through four two two. I talk to Rod quite often, so. However, Rod and, and Rex get their information and then it. So at some point, Rex, maybe you and I and Rod should have a conversation. If you just come here, we can call him and we'll figure it out instead of, this is a commissioners' meeting. So I'm asking for those changes if we could, those contingencies.
I'll move to allow.
Rex needs to approve. Can you second it? All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Okay, set rates, boards, contracts for legal holding place for foreclosures currently Gan Valley Courthouse.
And this is the one, Steve, where they can go through A through E and just do it as a one, right?
You can do it as one, sure.
Yep, okay.
Okay. Read the official newspaper, it's such that the code of times, official depository, coin bank. Mileage, state rate is seventy cents a mile, sheriff seventy-five.
Right, or is it seventy-six?
Sheriff's eight cents.
Eight, solid beat.
Be seventy-eight.
Yeah.
Sheriff's eight, seventy-eight. Election precincts and polling places, current is Buffalo County Courthouse, Fort Thompson, Crow Creek Hall, Fort Thompson Catholic Hall, and Crow Creek Creek Community Hall.
And do, do we know that the Crow Creek Community Hall is gonna be open? I know currently it's, it's not. There's somebody staying in there. So I don't know if we could do maybe a contingency plan on that, that if something in Crow Creek over there, um, if we could have it at maybe like the hall where the VA sits over in that, there's that gymnasium over there. That's on a, or someplace. Well, they would have to travel, 'cause there's really no other place in District Two. So, I, let's keep it as is, but know that maybe we have to change. I don't, so.
If they're still in that facility, election time, I've got a child policeman center out there. You guys can, I have my kids in there.
Okay.
So.
So we.
Right across the street from there.
So, but I could make it right now to still be where it's at and.
Just leave it that way.
Okay.
We'll follow up with cut.
All right, sounds good.
Okay. So I.
You have to make a motion for those.
I need a motion to, uh, approve the rates and.
A through E? Uh, A through E?
For eleven, A through E.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
I don't know.
Thank you. Okay, appointing, appointing boards and designations. Planning and zoning, current is Rex Zastro, Alan Fagan, Jack Abernathy, Clayton Kniffling, and Lyndon Ness.
And I don't believe Lyndon Ness resides in the county any longer, so.
She lives in rural county.
So I don't know. Rex, did you get ahold of him? See if we could replace. So I don't know, Rex, did you get ahold of me and see if we could replace?
Planning board, we don't have a comprehensive plan. It's a new point.
Exactly.
It's related to money for paying a mileage.
Well, I don't think they're. What did you say, Wes?
I would want you to relax, uh, for if you need somebody.
Oh, okay. Good. And, and what is, you're in pit, Steve?
Well, I don't think it hurts anything to have a board in case we haven't really reestablished. I, I think it's one of those things like, not active, but it's not. We're not paying anybody anything.
True.
So, but yeah, uh, I don't think there's ever an indication that we will reestablish, so. You're supposed to pick the boards at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
But if you have a comprehensive plan and have a zoning plan in place, we don't have that. Right, we don't. So how can you pick a board if you don't have something for the board to act on? It's kind of like we, we could, we pick a mental illness group. We don't have anything to act on right now. But we will, we will at some point in that, we don't. Just because everybody else does it, we have to follow. So we don't have to, and, and you know, you could, we could choose not to do it. I think there's only three counties, one correct, that don't have them. Liman and Ussen. So, you know, we don't have to have it. I'm just telling you, it doesn't hurt to have it either. It's, it's all those things where it's no cost to do anything.
It's not costing anything.
Then in case he gets his zone and lies, it's all set up for you. Otherwise, you gotta go chase down people and want them to get on this board, and everybody will say, no, no.
I'm happy for that.
I can do this, you can question.
Well, we could put Wes on that and take Linda off. Um, Wheaton Pest Board. Current is Anita Laudner, Steve Lee Sinkey, Richard Coleman, Jeff Fagan, Brian Laudner, Roudner, and Dana Jabal. Landfill Board is myself. Mental Health Board is Deech Cook, Carol Graven, and Susan Horn, too. And, uh.
And there was a time limit on that.
Yes, there's a three-year.
Two consecutively, three years.
Is that, okay, six years. So, um, we need to keep Deech on. Is that not my understanding, Steve?
Yeah, you need to.
Need to have him on.
You need to have him on. I need, it could be long.
Yeah.
State attorney cannot be, where the, where the, from like what the person trying to send it to.
Yes.
He's kind of a judge in some ways.
Yeah.
And we can have, um, the.
Chairman Lenke would like to be on.
Same.
And I also approached, um, Diane Inch.
Correct.
Diane Inch is a physician, says whatever at the Horizon Center. And I think that would be something that would also help enhance some of that mental health part, because I don't know if she does those
Evos?
Yeah, you know, I didn't get a chance to ask for that.
I don't know that.
I don't know that either, but I thought it would be nice to have that.
So we could have a five, a five-person board instead of a three, could just add two or three.
But Carol and Susan have probably been on.
I don't know how long they've been on.
Twenty-five years I've been here. So I'd like to.
Ninety percent of the work is done by.
And go with Chairman Lkey and Diane Inch.
Okay, I have a motion to take off Carol and Susan and put on Chairman Peter Lenke.
Diane Inch.
And Diane Inch as a, um, healthcare person.
They're just on the board. They don't, I mean, like, and Lenke wanted to be on there, but is there something he could, like?
Yeah, it, here's what really, here's what it really comes down to. Most of the, most of the stuff the board does is emergency commitments, which is done by Deech alone. He doesn't need the other people. If there's a, there's a longer form you could go through, and if you go through that form, then these three people, each and these other two would vote uh, kind of like, do we think this person needs to go or not? That, that's why they're there. In, in case you go through the longer system and and you would, uh, they, they make a determination as a board.
Because most of the things are fairly fast, ain't they?
Mostly you have to it fast. You haven't got time to do this slow.
But the other thing, a, as Peter came,
Yeah.
you know, he would like to work and try and help.
With the, the financing maybe would. The, the issue is always going to be the same. We all know it, which is transportation.
Transportation.
Even though the VIA or the, someone said they'll pay transportation, the issue is still bodies. You have to be law enforcement trained to go. We don't have five deputies where we can send, and you're supposed to send too often. And, uh, uh, we don't have those people. Uh, we're lucky if we have one. Uh, sometimes you also have the next issue, which is if it's a woman, you shouldn't, you shouldn't really send a woman along. Because if they have to go to the bathroom at the rest area, what do you do? You know, there's all kinds of issues. Uh, so, uh, and that's why, as indicated, maybe we need to try to be doing some evaluations of how we could do this and then.
But no matter what, the tribe police can't
The money is.
Off of the reservation.
They're not tribal, there's not tribal with police. There are no tribal. It's VIA.
And, and at the end of the reservation, they have no power, so like if they're if the, if an Indian officer was taking someone to Sioux Falls and stopped at the rest area and they run away, they haven't got any more power than you and me.
Yeah.
We got no law enforcement power.
They have VIA all of them.
Yeah, you need someone way bigger than us, yeah. And, uh, so those are, those are the issues. And they're unique somewhat to us because we're on a reservation.
My, my question is, and Deech brought that up at, at one of the meetings, is going and, and this is kind of why I think maybe Diane would not be a dumb idea, is, um, when they go into some of these facilities, they don't actually have a doctor. They've got telemed.
Yeah.
And it's supposed to be face-to-face
Right.
with a live body, not a tele.
Right. Evaluating somebody mentally over a TV is.
Really hard from, from listening to what Deech had to say.
Yeah.
And, you know, the other thing, and, you know, I know people are sitting here going, whatever. But the number one, suicide rate right now in the United States is farming ranchers. And, uh, it's, it's not just affecting our reservations. It's there was one in Chamberlain last night. It was a nurse. You know, when's the next time it's somebody we all know? I guess that's my two cents worth.
No, thank you.
So what we're trying to do right now is get the board established. We got something to work with.
Yeah.
We've got a lot more work to do.
So. Yeah.
So that you guys need to make a motion on that specific one or?
Well, I think we're maybe.
On that specific, okay.
Right.
So this one, you're looking at your mental health board. You would like to pass the change to Deech, Peter, and Diane.
And then District Three, current is Anita. And then the drainage board, current is Buffalo County Commissioners. So. So with that, I, I need a motion, I guess.
I'll give a motion.
All in favor? We have motion passed. Okay. Buffalo County salaries. Now, these are current right now, right, Deb?
Yeah, you'll see the current one there. And then if you're an annual person, I just did the salary by hourly calculator, so.
Oh, okay.
But, uh, so.
Okay.
That just kind of, so if it's wrong, there's your, I just did it through that, that's.
Do that out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the one, I, before you go into rural salaries and other people, I guess, like the mileage for, um, for the election coming up, I would like to keep things the same as is, twenty-five dollars. So I think that one is in I, H I N J, so we can take those. I'd like to keep those the same if approved by the commission. So.
And that's what they have, that?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. H I.
So we have the school and we have all that, so I'd just like to keep everything twenty-five dollars.
Okay. H I N J. Okay. Okay, gotcha. And you said the per diem may be possibly changing?
Right now, the state is at the seventy and seventy-eight. But federally, they just increased it. So typically when the federal increases,
State does.
State increases as well. So if that happens, I would just bring it to the commission.
Okay. Okay.
Depending on where it's at. Sometimes rapids higher than Sioux Falls or, you know, but it's all up there.
Okay. All right. So currently, the highway superintendent's at fifty-seven thousand annual, which is twenty-seven forty an hour. Highway assistant, twenty-four forty-seven. At fifty thousand eight, ninety-seven sixty. Assistant number two is at twenty-four an hour, forty-nine thousand nine twenty. Sheriff, fifty-seven seventy-five, seven fifty, twenty-six seventy, twenty-seven seventy-six. Treasure force, forty-six, three oh five, twenty-two, twenty-six an hour. State's attorney, forty-three, two fifty-three. Auditor, registered deeds, forty-four one, twenty-one twenty. Went through all of the election deal. Registered deeds.
Which is part of.
Part of the auditor's office. Director of Legalization, twenty-two oh five an hour for thirty-two hours at thirty-six, six ninety-one. Commissioners, two twenty-five per meeting plus mileage. Wheaton Pest, three thousand. Wheaton Pest regular meeting per diem, Wheaton Pest meetings away and per diem.
Currently, right now, for the Wheaton Pest, I believe, Lee, you have it as twenty-five dollars an hour as well. So if there's like a meeting that's here, or I think you guys had one over in Pukwana, they would travel, that would be twenty-five dollars plus the per diem of traveling. The other one where we get sticky is, let's say Rich Coleman goes to the conventions. I think that's a board, and he should get that whatever.
And there's two or three of them that are required every year.
Yeah. And that's coming up in November, or February.
And I think we have that at two twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, per diem.
A bit?
For the whole day.
That's a board, just like we're a board or whatever, so.
So. So what are your thoughts on?
Well, I, I believe at a three percent, um, cost of living.
Is that kind of comparable with, Deb, you know what the other counties are giving?
I just know Hand is getting eight percent, and rural county was getting a forty-five, weren't they?
I don't know.
Okay, I'd have, I just, I talked to Doug the other day, and I know they're getting eight, so.
I heard the state was zero, wow.
That's cool. That's everything.
Zero is a zero, wow.
I think it's a percent.
Well, I believe everybody should, you know, cost of living. So.
A lot of mental health going on, so.
Well, and our, our superintendents and those guys, their insurance run up, so it's you know, with families, their, their take home is less.
And I hope that we've got some kind of benefits for them now.
Uh-huh.
We've never had that twenty-some years. Appreciate that.
So.
Well, I'll move that we do a three percent, at least, cost of living.
Nope.
Okay, well, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nope.
Same sign, any motion here? Okay, our regular commissions meeting.
Yes, three percent.
Yes.
I went ahead and just put all the dates on there. You'll notice that we have canvassing in June and canvassing again on the fifth, so those would be on Thursday.
Right. And December we'll have to, so in December and September, we have to have two meetings.
A budget meeting and, uh, I think so, but, yeah, I just put on regular meetings, I guess, at this point.
Uh-huh. But there are, are some couple of months in there that we have to have two meetings, and I believe it's September and December, if my memory is certainly right.
I think those are just FYI's.
Okay, all right. Retail on and off-site malt beverage license fee.
So right now, you guys have it, I believe, three hundred, correct, as for, for the one, and then a thousand for the others.
On, on sale.
Yeah. So, yeah, the first ones right there would be the three hundreds. And now those are done in the middle of the, the year. And then end of the year are the on, on sale liquor license, thousand, and we now get to keep that for the full thousand. We don't have to, so that's nice. And then we can do the fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, and then we've always donated or given the, for the fire hall, when they guys do that. You guys, it's just been a, a, we just fill out the license and we just take care of it here, so. Just have to approve it through the commission. So those are the three. I would suggest not changing anything. I think everything is going good, so.
So when we donate that license to all of that, would we make all the pay sales back?
You, you would have to ask the person that, I don't believe so because they're Abernathy.
What?
You pay sales back?
That's a term.
One S, I guess.
No, you don't pay.
Well, they pay you. That was all I asked.
But you know, doesn't the beer sales go to the Legion? Now, have you ever had like an audit done on that?
No.
Maybe we should.
Okay.
We just did, Lee and you just did one not so long ago. Kind, I don't know if it's called an audit. I don't know what you want to call it. But when it's a not-for-profit organization, um, like the churches had to do a
Tax exempt.
Tax exempt.
Exempt.
So, and you filled that, you gave that to Lee, right?
Okay. So I need a, uh, motion to accept the retail on and off.
Is that three hundred and the thousand set by legislative?
That's the minimum, I guess.
That's the minimum.
Yeah.
We could increase it.
You could.
I move to leave it the same.
Okay, Rex, you make a motion to keep and leave the same. Do you need a second? It's all in favor? Motion passed. Do we need any, um, executive session? For anything? Okay. Need a motion to approve the vouchers.
So on the vouchers, there's a list like this that I sent all the commissioners.
Yeah, we got that last night.
We had some new ones. We had some new ones come through today. We went to the mailbox as well as Wes kind of had some things. So there's three more additional besides what you have on here, which are L and M, Central Dakota Times, and Amcota. And those are, that just, Don, there's catty corner of what the other ones, those three.
These are yours.
Everybody else has got that. Those are the three that just, I opened them up this morning.
L and M, sanitation, two twenty. Central Dakota Times, thirty-seven, thirty-six. Amcota, twenty-one forty-five, or some fasteners and nails.
And so just the Titan, the highway, that's the lease agreement.
Right.
So that one's at seventeen thousand, three hundred something. The South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, that's kind of the bigger one there, but that's for our coverage.
Right.
So.
So I need a motion to accept vouchers. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Same sign. Rex, yeah. Next meeting is-
R- real quick on your training. I believe there is one, I didn't look to see when the next holiday is, but I think there's one in this month, but I'm not sure.
Martin Luther King Day.
So.
Uh, I think the nineteenth.
So.
I believe.
So I'll put a, post that out there, that, and put it on the Facebook page, so. And then, and I know Lee has an upcoming training, but I think he can talk to you guys probably in February, beginning in February, on that one, so.
Okay. Need a motion to adjourn.
Before we do that, Steve, our, it was just the manager contract. We need to update that.
When do you do?
We do. It expired the twenty, year twenty-three.
We got a email from-
I think I just sent it to you, Don.
Yeah.
Look, on there I would like to add some kind of, um, report or whatever. I know he says-
Like a quarterly or something?
Yeah, well, we pay in quarterly, right? We get a bill from them quarterly. And I'd like something like that.
Okay.
We should get a report from Lee about what he's doing.
Okay, I have informed the state's attorney.
Would you listen to what she's talking about?
I have informed the state's attorney that the agreement has expired and that a new one is needed for review. It won't likely be ready until either November or February, February or March meetings. In the meantime, I may be helpful to have the commission look at the current agreement and determine what changes, if any, are needed. A change I would like to see is an increase each year equal to the CPI we use for property tax increases. I also think the agreement should be for more years, say three or four. If your commission could return a copy of the agreement with us, to us, with any changes add-on or deletions, that would be awesome. Please take note of my new email, Doug DeVore.
Was the last one for two or three years? What do you remember?
It was just one year.
Just one year.
Okay.
You know, and then in January, we always upgraded it, but we don't have anything contract with it, so I think we need to-
What do you guys think of three, a three-year contract? Or what do you want?
Something that, and some kind of accountability.
Yeah, in a court, I, I wrote, I just said maybe we should include a quarterly report. And I wrote, should we make it for three years? I didn't say we need to, I just showed myself.
I'll forward you the contract that we currently have.
And, uh-
The email that Doug sent.
Yeah.
CPI is fine, except it's, it might be easier to use a simple number, like two percent or something. Rather than having to figure out what CPI was.
Right.
There are several CPIs.
And then also, Chris Jacobson was here today. And we all need to go through this and discuss it next month.
It's a codified law now, I guess.
Yeah.
It's a codified law that-
I told Dave about that a couple months ago.
So. Anyway. So. I guess we need a motion to adjourn. The next meeting is February fifth. All in favor? Opposed, same side? Motion. Thank you. I don't need to keep these three new ones separate.
Just sign them, and I'm going to go get that transmittal, I think that, or that A roll.